One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You seated? Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Carroll.
Yes.
Alderman Stowe.
Here.
Alderman Tripp.
Here.
Alderman Vacar.
Here.
Alderman Dunn. Alderman Genetti.
Here.
Alderman Tippett.
Here.
Alderman Dempsey.
Here.
Alderman Yalman.
Here.
Alderman Raven. Present Alderman Stewart.
Here.
Alderman Henry.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell.
Here.
Alderman Delapo.
Here.
Thirteen present and one.
I declare a quorum. Uh, consideration of previous minutes, we have the minutes from the 11th of July. I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Castellantis, is there a second? Mr. Josh Stewart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stayed, sir.
I've got two abstentions, uh, Mr. Yalman and Mr. Martin Dempsey. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Public session. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Sir, gentlemen, hand up. Name and address for the public record, please.
Right on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. I'm Chris Phipps, 60 Rockwood Avenue. I should also say, um, I'm a member of the Board of Education, but tonight I'm speaking not on behalf of the Board, but for myself. I don't necessarily speak for them. I was tempted, last month after seeing the, um, the video and the minutes, and reading the minutes, I was tempted to come. And I don't want to seem by any means confrontational. If I come out that way, I don't mean this tonight. Um, and there was some back and forth between a couple elected officials, and I just got the feeling that, and I was hoping we were over this. I got the feeling of an us versus them, of the city versus the Board of Education, two separate entities rather than working together. That's the vibe I got from the meeting and the minutes, and it's been there. And this year, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a rougher budget season. This past year was, was good, and it was very good, and I thought we were, but I just wanted to address that. But then what really prompted me to come tonight was the resolution that I see in the minutes about a regionalization of the schools, which I'm not necessarily opposed to. As a matter of fact, we've looked at it before. Before I joined the Board of Education, I was part of a committee in 2011 that explored regionalization. And it, and this was with the officials from Derby, including municipal officials, Board of Education. And just last year, I believe it was August of 2016, we had another meeting with municipal leaders from Derby, municipal and education, and educational from Derby. America Cetti, I believe you were at that meeting, and two representatives from the State of Connecticut Board of Education, who were filling us in and giving us information about regionalization. And their thoughts at that time were, it wasn't practical to go forward with it. Everyone thinks that we're going to save millions of dollars by regionalizing, which we had thought the savings too, and they said, realistically, it's just not there. Shared services are the way to go, and that's what we've been working on ever since. And I know that town itself is working on the shared services. Regionalization, some people get confused also by co-ops that they see, particularly in sports teams, you know, Sacred Heart Co-op with Caner Tech, Westbrook and Old Sabram. That's sports only. That's not regionalization. Matter of fact, we also tried for our girl's sports programs to co-op with Derby because we both have low numbers. CIAC said no. So we're trying different things, but as far as the regionalization goes, and what I'm really here for is being disturbed by just the lack of communication with the Board of Education regarding this. This hit us all by surprise. I asked Dr. Malone, she did not know anything about it, and something like this, I would think, again, not a bad idea, but why wasn't the Board of Education, the educational professionals that know everything about, the finances also, why wasn't anybody even discussed this with? We'd like to be part of it. Which brings me also to the resolution itself, and I read that and I looked up the statute. Um, with the resolution, there's no second town listed on it. Who's the town? Is it Derby? We assume it's Derby. Are they interested? Okay? And then the statute also says, I just want to point out here, and I agree with all the wheres on here, we agree 100%, at least I do. The same, the people in this room, the Board of Education, the teachers, everybody in the city, I hope, where we want to provide the best educational opportunities for the students, being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. That's what we want to do, that's what Dr. Malone and I are set to do every single day, every day. And we all know, we're broke, city's broke, state's broke, we do, we're trying to stretch nickels into dimes as everybody else is. But again, if we all work together, I think we're going to have more success. Now getting to the wheres, which I agree with, but the therefore, the resolution that I believe that you're going to vote on, it's written as authorizes the establishment of a regional school study committee to study the advisability of establishing a temporary regional school district. That's wrong. The statute reads, establishment of a temporary regional school study committee to study the advisability of establishing a regional school district. It's not a temporary school, regional school district, it's a temporary committee. So I think that if you're going to vote on this, you should, again, check the language in the statute. This is right off the Connecticut State statutes, okay? And it also talks about, two or more local or regional school districts may vote with their legislative bodies as well, but the, um, I'll cut to the chase, I'm talking too much, I'm getting dry. Um, and the appointment of a committee member, now this would be from each town. Once a committee, if it decided to go forward, and it is expensive to do a full feasibility study for regionalization, it costs a lot of money. I don't know where that would come from. But the legislative body of each town, joining in the establishment of such committee, shall appoint to such committee five members, at least two of whom shall be members of the Board of Education of each town. So, should anything go forward and appointments are made, please bear that in mind, and again, from the Connecticut State statutes. So this will, hopefully, I don't want to force cooperation and collaboration, but it will, but, but please, that's the gist of what I'm saying tonight. As entities here, let's all get together, be on the same, no more us versus them. And you know what? It's not just people in this room, this building, you know, there's guilt on all sides. And I don't want to say sides, because that's fallen into it. But I think we all, whatever difference, there should be no politics in education. There's no room for it. And if there's personality issues, let's work them out. We don't need this. We need to do the best we can together for the kids. We always talk economic development, and it's been said before, and I'm going to say it again, the best economic development and driver for a town is schools, education. I don't know if there's any realtors, what's the first day they look? The first day to look is Mr. Hale and crime and schools. That's how you get the fan, that's how the town grows. Everything else spurs from that. So again, let's work together, and I don't want to preach, but I just ask again for, let's work together, guys, and Mrs. Raiden. Not the, oh, I didn't want to say guys.
It's okay.
All right. Thank you for giving me the time tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Ed, please. Name and address for the public record, please.
Edward McYankee, 21 Casteline. I got a suggestion, change Nelson Drive to Howard Tenny Drive.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else, Dr. Malone? Uh, name and address for the public record, please.
Now, Carol Malone, Superintendent in Ansonia Schools, and we've got H. Shoreville Drive in Ansonia. If any of the Board of Aldermen wish to come over to the office, I have all the notes and all the studies from 2011. I have the surveys that were done with Ansonia and Derby. There were 188 people who participated in the survey. We put it out to both communities. Only 188 people responded, and out of the 188, we had 30%, 36% of the people were in favor of regionalization. And many of the comments were from the other town, they do not want to merge with Ansonia. So, if that's the town you're talking with, I called there today, and no one in the town knew of this. So if you were regional, if you're going to regionalize with the town, you have to make them aware of it. So Derby was not made aware of this. I talked to the, um, the superintendent, who called the, um, the mayor, and neither one of them were aware of this. So, in order to work together, we have to communicate together. Now, I was down at the mayor's office this week, uh, last week, introducing Dr. DeBachco, the new assistant superintendent. At that time, we could have been made aware of this, I would have helped you out and given you all the information. Mayor, you were at the last meeting last summer, and then you were supposed to come with us up to Salem, and you did not come with us, nor did any one of the board members, but all of Derby's slate came with us. And, um, what, what came out of that meeting was that we should continue with shared services like they told us from Hartford. So, that's all I have to say. But I'd be more than happy to give anybody this statistics, or I have all the records at, um, 42 Grove Street.
Thank you, doctor. Uh, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Sir, name and address for the public record, please.
Yes, good evening. Harry D'Amelie Jr., 52 North Cliff Street, Ansonia. Um, I'm here tonight to let everybody know, Board of Aldermen, Mayor Cetti, that this upcoming November election, I am going to run for Board of Aldermen in a second ward as an independent. And I just, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Third time, is there anyone else in the public wishes to speak? Hearing none, seeing none. Public session is closed. Thank you. Uh, public official session, Mayor Cetti, please.
Yes, sir. How's everybody doing? Good evening, members of the Board of Aldermen and residents of the great city of Ansonia. I want to begin by having a moment of silence for Ansonia football legend Roger Goodson Sr. He was an outstanding human being, and he also served in World War II, a veteran of Normandy in the Battle of the Bulge. He passed away this past Sunday. It is a tremendous loss for the city of Ansonia, and he will be missed. Now I would like to recognize two individuals, one who's, one who are here tonight. Our very own Alderman Pat Henry, who is our sixth Ward Alderman, a veteran of the Afghanistan War. Pat will be celebrating his 20th year as a U.S. Navy Reserve this summer. We honor you, we salute you, and we thank you for your dedication and service to our country. Please stand and be recognized. I also want to recognize and thank Tom Henry, a lifelong resident of Ansonia, who will be, who will also celebrate 20 years in the Naval Reserve this October. Tom, if you're here, please stand.
He's not here.
He's not here. August is a very busy month in Ansonia. Parents are preparing their children for what I am sure will be another exciting year of learning in a few short weeks. But before that, please be sure to mark your calendars for Rock the Valley on August 19th from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Beetle Mania is the main attraction, but our very own state senator George Rogan will also be appearing in the Electric Lady Band, and fireworks, to name a few attractions. Last week, Police Chief Kevin Hale, First Ward Alderman Charlie Stowe, and Randy Carroll and I, held an informational session regarding recent criminal activity in the First Ward. Police, Public Works, and members of the Board of Aldermen were on hand to answer questions. At that forum, residents also raised concerns about blight in that area. As part of a continuing our aggressive efforts to address blight throughout Ansonia, there will be a Stomp Out Blight meeting at 6:30 p.m. in Aldermanic Chambers on August 17th. I encourage everyone to attend. We will have members of our Building Department, Public Works, and Police Department on hand to answer questions, resolve issues, and together, along with all our Aldermen, we will continue to stomp out blight. When I first came into office, my corporation counsel John Marini, along with my administration and I, partnership with the Board of Aldermen, developing one of the strongest blight ordinances in Connecticut's history. This program has been a great success, dramatically decreasing blight throughout the city. However, we can do better. We must continue to be aggressive, and we must continue to be diligent about properties that neglectively affect our city. Our blight office wants to hear from residents about what is going on in your neighborhood, and so do I. Remember, this is a joint effort. Our Aldermen are out in the community. I drive throughout the neighborhoods every day. I want to ensure that we are doing everything possible to keep Ansonia clean and attractive. The city of Ansonia is charging forward with all our new projects, and you will hear more about this from our Economic Development Director. On the economic development front, we hope to have a large announcement that may bring significant job growth into the city within the next two weeks. We are helping to bring the prospective tenant to the table. More to come on that front. Our contractors have already begun work on the Riverwalk Segment 8. We are meeting with our engineers to begin the final design in Segments 3 and 4. Our architects met last week with members of the Senior Center Board to discuss the needs assessment and to work on a floor plan for relocation to 65 Main Street. We are completing our due diligence for that property and hope to have an agreement signed shortly. We are waiting a site plan submission from our developers regarding our two city-owned properties, along with their architects. They have been busy at work finalizing their plans. Last Thursday, some of the members of this, of this board joined me on East Main Street for the grand opening of Banco's. The new owner Joel Supero has completely revamped the space, and it is beautiful. He has also brought to town one of the very few guitar manufacturers in the United States, the Kava, who has taken up space above Banco's. Please visit it if you have not had a chance. As always, I encourage everyone to frequent our local businesses and restaurants. Our downtown is being recharged, and you are very much a part of it. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Are there any questions of you Aldermen from Eric Cetti? Uh, Raiden, please.
Yes.
Dave, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, fire hydrants, I haven't seen them done in our neighborhood.
Did they fix that one at?
They fixed the one at, at Mary Street. But I have, one of my neighbors on Church Street happens to be home all the time, and he's never seen them flush them out there. Have they been in our neighborhood?
I don't know. I could find out. I haven't.
Could you find out?
I haven't been to them on August 15th to go over all the fire. I could see what they're cleaning.
Because there's one on my corner, on Jackson and, uh, Wakeley.
Right.
And the other thing I want to ask you again is, what are we doing about the parking lot for Fitzpatrick? Are we getting that back?
I know.
Please?
I know, Joe.
We really need it.
You know, I really need to talk, I've had a little conversations with, um, Paul Fitzpatrick, but, you know, he, he.
Well, we really shouldn't be financing his business. That's city property, and we should be using it for our people that are paying taxes here.
But it's going to be hard to try to get that back. I mean, he's, he's got a lease agreement on it, and it's only 500 a month, I know 6,000 a year.
That's not the point. The point I have is it belongs to the taxpayers.
Right.
He's a business, nobody loan, nobody pays for me to let me park their, my stuff in my yard or their yard or anything. He's making money on it, we're not.
Yeah.
$500 is nothing.
It's nothing.
And we do have a lot of people that need parking spaces close to where they work, like Birmingham and the city hall and everything. It's not fair.
I agree.
Would you check that for me, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Joe, yes?
Hey, I've been after public work for months, some kind of trash, uh, Riverwalk.
Could you speak up, please?
Trash pails on Riverwalk?
Yes.
But there's little doggy things.
There's nothing all the way down.
What do you want, throw them in the thrower cups and stuff like that?
Uh, weight, dog weights, anything.
Well, they have a ba, a basket for them.
From the beginning, all the way down, there's not more garbage.
Okay, I'll talk to Mike about that.
I've been out there for quite a while now, and I see, I see people letting the dogs go, and I confronted one person the other day, and he's going to pick up, he says, "No, I don't have to." I said, "Well, okay." And he said, "Maybe if there's some garbage in there, maybe they would have..." No excuse.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So, just, uh, do that, please.
Yes.
Okay, here.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
Good.
Do you get anywhere with getting a price for the basketball hoops for Pine Lot Park?
I don't know. I'll talk to Mike. Mike's on vacation. Uh, I don't know if there's a representative from Public Works here tonight, going to make a report when we're talking about it, but I'll find out. What do you need? Hoops, or do you need the?
Two balls, two.
Oh, you need the balls. Up there at Pine Lot?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand, I had heard earlier that Mike wasn't going to be here. I was going to ask him a question. They have not sprayed the curbs. Uh, Grove Street looks like a garden on the street. Mary Street is horrible up at the corner. Jackson Street, part of Wakeley, and that's just my neighborhood.
That's right. It's all over.
And I came up the road this morning, I had to go to the doctors, I came up the road on Grove Street, it is, and Mary Street is disgusting. So, and he promised, the last two meetings, to do something about it. So, when does he do back?
I had him go on Grove Street because the weeds were three and a half feet high.
They're out in the road. It's out in the middle of the road.
Mike will be back tomorrow.
Okay, good. Get our side street, side roads done.
Yep.
Curbs done, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Carroll, please.
I'm a lighter now. Uh, could you please thank, uh, Mike for doing in front of Ansonia Copper Brass?
They did that today, yeah.
Yep, they did.
Yeah.
And they worked in the park today and did all of Liberty Street, but could you also remind him to do, uh, behind Daley Mart, the weeds are about this high. Uh, also, Greg's not here, but he asked, he emailed me months ago about a pole that he, uh, uh, the street light.
Right.
And it still has not been fixed.
Is it a light, or do they want a pole analyzed?
No, no, there is a pole there.
Oh, good.
The light, the light's not working.
Good.
Um, pole number 100 on Third Street.
On Third Street. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Pat Henry, please.
Yes, I, I agree with Joan on the weeds and spraying the weeds, but Fitzpatrick's going to have all those spaces they want, as long as we get the right price for it, as far as I'm concerned.
$100 is not enough.
Okay. Are there any other questions from Eric Cetti, please? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, that leaves, uh, Mr. John Marini, Corporation Counsel.
A brief update, uh, to follow up on Fitzpatrick's, you know, we're going to talk to them about possibly another space also in the downtown, because that is a premium space they're on. They're using it for inventory, maybe it's, they could use a space somewhere else in the city, and it won't be disruptive to their business, but at the same time, free up some space where we need it most. So that's in the, that's an option as well.
Thank you.
Also, to follow up on the, uh, some cleanup around town, Randy, good to hear. I was working this morning with Public Works in Mike's absence, telling them about that issue that you raised last night. Good to know that they got there quickly. Uh, the ordinances are on tonight, and you have a full complement, so you are able to pass those ordinances if it is the Board's pleasure. We'll get to that later in the night. As the mayor said, we're going to have on August 17th a meeting to go over again our blight program, both as a refresher and as a refocus effort in some of the wards on the, the north side of the city. We recognize that some issues were raised, we have the capacity to deal with that with our program, of course, but we also want to look at some other ideas, some ideas to pull the community together, maybe do some cleanup efforts to get results quickly. So we have enforcement on one side, but we really have some capacity with our volunteers, and I think a good concerted effort could help there. Uh, finally, I need added on tonight for the agenda, Ansonia versus Peck School for executive session, as we have some business to discuss there. That's pending litigation. So I need right after I'm done, Ansonia versus Peck School added on. And additionally, I want to point out, this is not on the blight report for tonight, but it is a substantial payment that we got in, payment of a blight lien, $40,000 for one property that was received, uh, late last week. So that will be in next month's packet, but that was a great pickup for the department. So, Ansonia versus Peck School, and other than that, any questions?
Uh, I'm going to take the first question, Mr. Marini. I usually, uh, if you have an addition to the agenda, we usually do it right after the roll call, and I just want to, through Corporation Counsel, make sure that we're within proper procedure regulations.
We could, in a regular meeting, we can make an addition to the agenda at any time, but we do need a vote, but we do need a two, two thirds vote of the Board of Aldermen.
All right, when, when the Aldermen are done asking you, we'll, I'll put that forward to the Aldermen. Okay. Are there any questions, Mr. Andy Carroll?
I do want to thank you because I talked to you last night at Arms about, uh, the weeds and the blight at Gadsden Park, or now it's like the Ghost Park, and Ansonia Copper Brass, and thank you for getting on a really quick way to come today.
And to let you know, of course, that is private property, so I've instructed them to quote out the cost of that work, and we're going to record that as a lien on the property, because of course, it's in the public's interest to get the work done, but we don't want to be letting the property owner skate free and clear here. Their responsibility, so one way or the other, they're going to pay for it.
You and I discussed that last night, and the law for, uh, charging him, uh, in case of maintenance, because it really was, uh, it didn't work great.
Good. Yeah, and that's the best, reporting is the best thing, you know, and Aldermen in the past have been very good at that, you know, reporting problems, because you're the eyes and ears of the city. The sooner the Public Works knows, Blight Department knows, the sooner we can do something about it. So thank you, Randy, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions of Mr. Marini for the Aldermen, please? Any questions of the Aldermen? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion as per Mr. Marini's request to add Ansonia versus Peck School. Mr. Vacar?
Motion, uh, Ansonia versus Peck School for the executive session agenda.
Seconded by Mr. Carroll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, so it's on the agenda per Mr. Marini. Thank you. Okay, Sheila Malli, Economic Development, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Just a quick update, Joan mentioned parking, and so I want to talk a little bit about that. You'll see surveyors out on East Main Street, they're doing an A2 survey of East Main Street, again, with looking at the parking issues and trying to form, uh, finalize plans for increasing parking spaces. But also, we, we have been looking and will probably try to do, um, a study regarding kiosks and privatizing some of our parking, some of our large lots that are being maybe underutilized or overutilized by not, not the right, not the right clients or people coming in. Um, I think sometimes they use our lots for, you know, to, um, to commute to, to, um, other cities, and they park their cars there all day, so spots are at a premium, and we're looking at all sorts of ways to increase revenue into the city, and also to accommodate the residential, uh, units that are going, going to be online in the upcoming next year and two years. Um, so the surveyors are out there. We're, we're going to the Traffic Commission on September 6th, um, with our proposal for East Main Street, how to revamp it and increase the parking. We'll be, we'll be going to that meeting. Um, you are, you have seen the contractor Capaso at the Armory. They are installing scaffolding, they're waiting on UI to cover the power lines, and, um, and then as soon as that happens, as they complete the scaffolding, they will, by the end of the month, begin the actual renovations of the Armory and the exterior. So you'll see them repointing the bricks and so forth. Um, let's see, we have a grant submitted for beautification of Main Street, which Let's see, we have a grant submitted for beautification of Main Street, which will include some sidewalk revamping, some additional lighting, benches, et cetera, and hopefully we'll keep our fingers crossed we will receive word that we have gotten that grant shortly. Also working on two brownfield grants, one for Ansonia Copper Brass, and one for any remediation that may have to occur as we acquire 65 Main Street. I think that's about it for now.
Uh, Randy Carroll?
All right, Carol.
Sheila, I think it's great that the Armory is being, being repointed, and that building is being stabilized. I'm sure you're aware that that is where in 1932 the Purple Heart was reinstated. It's a historic building.
Yes.
So it is my board, and as a historic building, thank you for getting it.
Appreciate it. Thank the board as well for their efforts. Any other questions?
Joan Raden, another question.
Sheila, I'd like to congratulate you on last night's thing that said you're the project manager expert. Is that a new title for you?
I don't think it's a new title, expert's a new title, it's very nice, it was very nice to be called that, but, you know.
That's what, you know, that's, I was interested in finding out about that.
I've been, I've been doing project management for a good, maybe 15, 20 years.
I've never seen it by your name, though. But what I really am interested in is, I was going through some of my old papers, and on September 9th in 2013, I mean Krugel did a complete report on the grants that she got, what she got, who they were for, what happened with them, and what they were for. They were small grants, they weren't grants like you're going after now. I would really like you to look at that, if you can go into the files and look at it, because it really helped a lot of the small, like the police department, Arms, all the did, they got small pieces of equipment, and what the way, the way it was listed was that she sent a copy of a grant to each of the departments, and then they put on things that they were interested in, and then had the grant, they were smaller ones, but something that possibly our people could use instead of trying to eke the money out of the budget and everything like that. There are a lot of grants out there, small ones, and I think people, they really can use.
I do work with some of the departments on some of those smaller requests, but, you know, the focus for the mayor has been economic development, that's been the priority, and that's a priority, I hope.
I understand that, it's wonderful that you're doing all the things you're doing, but we do have a lot of small things.
Absolutely.
That the police department, the Arms, which I'm very active in.
Absolutely.
They can use them, and a few thousand dollars there goes a long way for them, we're, we're talking millions for the other part. We really need some of the smaller grants also. I would appreciate that if you could look at that.
So noted.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sheila Mallie, please? Any others? None? Good, thank you very much, Sheila, thank you. Mr. Richard Bashir, Comptroller.
Good evening, everyone. This time for me is kind of a little bit less hectic, so we continue to monitor the state of Connecticut and their budget. Please know, we got a million questions on the car taxes. Until we know whether that motor vehicle cap grant is going to be allocated to the cities or not, we're holding those bills at this point in time. We'll reassess, and we continue to reassess monthly, but the bills will go out at a time when that is decided by the state. So, we continue to monitor. We're working very diligently on closing out last year's, and we're working on all of the pieces needed for the auditor, so we continue to do that, and we've transitioned into the New Year's budget, new purchase orders are starting to go out, and we're playing catch-up, so that's kind of where we are with that. I will tell you, especially the Finance Committee, Bob Chiskilka is working on the forms for next year's budget. So, those will be going out probably within the next two months or so, so it, it'll start up again soon. But other than that, that's where I am.
Joe?
Mitch, could I ask you a question? I'm sure everybody, not everybody, I don't understand, what is the cap grant? And they keep talking about that and the motor vehicle, I have no idea, I'm not a finance person, so I have no idea what it means.
Several years ago, the state legislator, legislature voted to cap motor vehicle taxes. Goes back to cars being taxed, seven cars being taxed in multiple cities, the amount of tax paid is different based on the mill rates. So what they were going to do is to enact a legislation that would cap the high end of the, of the mill rate for the motor vehicles, and reimburse the towns that were over that. So in our case, last year it was supposed to be capped at 32 mills. They actually changed their, during the budget process, so they only changed, capped it at 37. So we picked up a little bit of money in last year's budget for the cap grant. They said that this year, that we're currently in 1718, that the cap was supposed to be 32, and then the following year is supposed to go to 28.35, I think it was. And we're projected to get $680,000, I believe. It's based off a three-year prior where the mill rate was, and the grant list for motor vehicles at that time, so. We were supposed to get to 680, but there was a lot of rhetoric, a lot of rhetoric that nah, that might not go through, so when we did our budget, we reversed it so that we wouldn't take a hit should that not come through, and the more we hear, the more the state will not be giving the towns this cap grant of 680,000, which means when we do bill out our motor vehicle tax bills, they will go out at the 37 cap, if that's where they are, or the current mill rate of 37, 32, where we are. But we need to know what that is before we do. Some towns already issued, and if should they get another, if that cap grant doesn't go through, they will have to reissue another supplemental bill. We thought it best not to do that, so we did not. But the cap grant is something with the state that current law, but it doesn't look like they're going to give us the funding for.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Bashir, from the alderman? Hearing none, thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Chief Hale, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, thank you. Very briefly, as the mayor mentioned, we had a forum last week at the North End, Fourth Fourth Street, we all attended. Appreciate the even trust of the aldermen, who came together, a lot of new questions during. I always find that the best discussions are afterwards, and so we had some additional, quite a number of additional questions, these are officers there, and we spent another 45 minutes talking to neighbors, people who didn't want to ask questions out loud, or in public, I should say. So, I thought it went well, we found an increase in presence up there prior to that, and if the meeting had gone 30 seconds longer, I would have announced a drug arrest that's happening while we're all in there, one block over. But the mayor closed it too quick, so it's his fault that he didn't hear it that night, you're hearing it now. But it was, again, a well-attended, and people are paying attention, and so he was helpful, certainly to us. Happy to announce, and the superintendent let her know today, Officer Berry's going to spend another three-year term at a high school as our SRO, so he's got a death grip on that in multiple ways, I guess, and he's doing a great job up there. And you may have noticed that the traffic light at Main and Tree Mountain is finally working. So it's only taken a year, it's only taken one year. That was hit not once, but twice. First person took it out, not all the way. Three weeks later, the second person came out and made sure that that thing was completely obliterated.
Finished the job.
So, with that entailed, two different insurance claims, two different insurance companies, so now that goes, then they build the box, and then they install the box, and then we waited about three months for UI to come out, and put the meter on, and then throw the switch. So anyways, it's, it's working, it's up to working, haven't had any complaints, so I'll end on good looks. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Are there any questions? Joan Raden?
You mentioned two or three months ago about the speed light that you have?
Do they have a trailer?
And you promised that we could have it on Wakeley Avenue. Those trailer trucks, those 18-wheelers, and there's a few people in the neighborhood that I don't know what kind of cars they have, or said they're going like crazy down Wakeley Avenue, it's, you know, it's dangerous, it really is, because there's, there are some kids out, and it's scary, and, and like I said, we get 18-wheelers, at least six or eight of them a day.
So it's like Clifton Avenue right now, just moved there last week.
Okay.
And so it's good for about two weeks.
Okay, so we have it by the time school starts?
Yes.
Because that'll be in two weeks, and people are driving like crazy on that road.
We'll get it out there. Where, where in Wakeley?
I'd like it in front of my store.
Okay.
No, they seem to be coming to the light, they seem to come to light, so probably by the cemetery, maybe.
Yeah, you can't have it too close to the light because it's.
No, no, but if you put it up there, I think they, they just race to go through that light, it's horrible.
All right, we'll get it down by the Sullivan.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Randy Carroll?
This is the night of thanks for me. I want to thank you for attending the meeting at the North End, and since then I have seen a lot more police, as I said, in the North End, and thank you. Also, I just want to let you know that during that meeting, I passed out a sheet to have people sign up for the block watch, and we got about 10 people interested to join. I gave the list to Ed Norman, who as you are well aware, is the one that performs block watches all over the city, and he will contact the people and let you know when there will be a block watch, like I'll have Detective Esposito and Officer Nelson, who's transitioning into that.
Yeah.
But thank you for your help, and I, I appreciate it.
Thanks, chief.
Patrick Henry?
Chief, so you were on Frontal Avenue for a couple of weeks with the trailer, so I'm interested to see when that information gets compiled and if you'll put the forms up there.
Yeah, so the, the part of the, it's twofold, you know, it slows people down, it also tracks, so then we can get a report on dates or days of the week and times, because some streets, we can enforce it in a day and night, some streets are at the worst times and others. So I don't have that report, when I get it, I can certainly forward it to you, but it's something we look at as well, to position officers, you know, during the worst times, if you will. I can tell you, like Elm Street, for instance, it's 20, we could be there 24 hours because the mean is, is just so much higher, it's such as, you know, a difference from the, above the speed limit, but some other streets are at worst times.
Any other questions for Chief Hale? Thank you, Chief Hale. I don't see Mike DeLesso here tonight, he's on vacation until tomorrow. Dr. Malone, any, anything else for the good of the order?
Well, preparing for the opening of school, the administrators who were back last week, on, on Freshman Academy begins August 14, and the teachers who will come back on August 20, third, students will be in on August 28.
20.
Even one, thank Chief Hale for that home call today, because that was a relief, or we welcome him to be here again, he is phenomenal. A little note, I'm in Lyons, I met with Michael Kent from the City Department last week, and there are going to be 10 schools that are selected, we're not one of them for the month. They're called opportunity schools, and they're, they're bigger schools.
Yeah.
Because the state is not home with everything.
Yeah.
And they don't anticipate a budget until October 11.
Wow. Really doing their job. Mr. Stowe?
Okay, so I think I'm the committee chairman on the Board of Ed, subcommittee chairman?
Board of Ed?
Yeah.
I think so. I can double check that.
You don't have one in front of you, do you?
Yeah, no, I just.
I don't know who the rest of them are, but I think Mr. Yaman ought to be put on that, and, and Mr. Yaman, I'm hoping can spend some time with Ms., Dr. Malone, and see how far they've gotten along, and be able to report back, but I don't know, you know, you'll need to get that list of, of committee members, so hopefully if you meet Dr. Malone on Grove Street, you can bring some other committee members with you. If I can go, I will, probably, it may be too early in the, you know, I may be working, I don't know.
Can we adjust around your time, Charlie?
I, you've done it before, and I just, I don't want to be too greedy, I don't know what your time, I know you're very busy, very busy.
I'll stay.
But, so, can we work something out like that?
Yeah, Charlie, just to answer your question, thanks to Mr. Castleitis, he brings all his stuff. It's you, Charlie Stowe is the chair, Mr. Joe Ginetti and Randy Carroll, so I can add Mr. Yaman to that.
Is that all right, Joe?
Sure. All right, I don't, the meetings are a bit early, so sometimes it's difficult to work, but.
No worries, Charlie, I have no troubles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, are there any other public officials I'm missing? Not seeing anything, okay.
Finance Committee, are we supposed to make pay law bills that sound to be correct? Am I on that?
Yeah, well, yeah, go ahead. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Right, Mr. Vicarall, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
As far as the Finance Committee goes, I, you know, there's been a lot of talk about retirement. Are we, are we going to have a meeting over the retirement, the Finance Subcommittee?
Corporation Counsel, did I? Communication, I saw.
Communication tonight.
Right.
About extending the period.
Right.
For that early retirement offer.
Right.
That was relating to that one union, the biggest school workers' union.
Right.
I believe until October 1st, because we had more than one interested persons in the union.
Right.
And it made sense, if we're going to extend the period for one or two people, makes sense to give everyone that opportunity. But I wasn't aware, if we need to meet on it, that's, that's great, but nothing new is being offered, that's extending that existing offer.
All right, just, because I like to keep on the straight and narrow, so your legal guidance is, we can, as the Board of Aldermen, extend that to one October?
Yep, we offered it originally.
Right.
So there's nothing prohibiting us from extending it to October 1st, and of course, it's up to the union to accept that extension.
Right, right, right.
Okay, number, number, so we don't need a Finance Committee meeting for that yet?
Corporation Counsel?
We don't need a Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, so.
Just the full board would need to.
Number, number two, do you let, we're going to actually have election primaries?
I don't know. You have to ask.
It's up to the candidate, right?
Well, it looks like that's what's going to happen.
Well, I don't know.
Do we, as the Finance Committee, do we need to figure out where the money's going to come from for that? There was a number that was kicked around.
$17,000.
Do we need to have a meeting to figure out where that's going to come from, or is there going to be suggestions with vote? Richie, would he?
We should have a line item called Unanticipated Primaries, and I don't know exactly what's in it, but it's usually funded around $15,000 here.
Pretty sure we left some money in that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, before, you know, before it gets too far ahead of us, we need to know what we need to do with that situation, right, Richie?
I'll look, I'll talk to Nancy.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, if there's action required, I mean, Richie, you can make a phone call to Charlie, vice versa, I mean, you know.
I just, I'm really, that should go to Nancy Valentine.
If we need that money, we'll get it into the vote.
If you could talk to Nancy, it would be better to.
Yeah, I'll talk to Nancy, if we need more money, we'll get it into the vote.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only reason I hesitated is because Nancy Valentine, who's not here right now, will be the one to tell us if somebody's turned in the paperwork to qualify, or is that you? Who's the final work, paperwork turned into? You or Nancy? Oh, okay, does anybody come forward? Prima? Oh, so there is one person, so I guess we'll have a primer.
That's all it takes, is one, from what I heard.
Oh, that's petition. So nobody for primer? Oh, nobody for, says.
So, but, Rich, you, because she goes in her office, you can get a vote, please, thank Okay, so I, another, because you're on committees right now?
Uh, yes, I'm on Finance Committee, which is you, and then I was going to go to Public Works. Do you want to cover Public Works as well, in Mike DeLesso's absence?
I was going to, just while I was talking salary, we need to finish the secretaries.
That's Martin.
We need to make a date. Email was sent out today with a potential date on August 21st.
August 21st?
6:00 p.m.
I, I can make it. Is there anyone else on that?
I emailed you that I can make it.
Okay, Mr. Mariney, going to be able to make it, so hopefully we can finish that up.
21st is Monday night, yeah, Monday night. Okay. Anything else for Finance Committee, Charlie?
Thank you.
Okay, are you covering Public Works as well?
Mike's on a long needed vacation. The only, the mayor's not here, so the question I have to ask him, wait until next month when they're both here.
All right, so that's fine.
WPCA, we didn't have a meeting, so there's nothing there.
I'll scratch that out as well, so right in the, you good, Charlie?
Yep.
Okay, so right in the middle is Arms, Mr. Dave Blackwell?
Sir, for the month of July, Arms responded to 266 calls. Of those 266 calls, we transported 6, 163 to Griffin, 18 to Yale, 6 to Bridgeport, 6 to St. V's, 4 to Yale Children's Hospital, 3 to Yale New Haven and St. Brapeel Campus, 1 to the VA Hospital West Haven, 1 to Waterbury Hospital. As far as mutual aid goes, we provided 19 assists to the city of Derby, 4 assists to the city of Seymour, and 1 assist to the town of Monroe for a bariatric repair. As far as our calls go, from mutual aid received to the city here, we had 2 calls received on the second call, when one ambulance was already out, both on the overnight shifts, when we only had 1 crew, and we received 1 call on a 4th call, we had 3 ambulances out, and the 4th one was out of service, getting repaired. So those were the 3 calls that we received, help from other towns. As far as billing and revenue for the month, it was $59,800, excuse me? Fifty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blackwell. Thank you. Uh, it's Arms, Charlie's already done WPC, Fire Commission, Mr. Patrick Henry, what, question?
Question.
Sure, sorry.
Hey, I was at the meeting last night, as you well know, and HA, the system.
The HVAC unit?
Was brought up, are you gonna discuss that? Because I'll make a motion.
Um, I'd rather talk with the Corporation Council on that, I know he was there later on, and, um, we're gonna discuss with the chief before we move forward, so everybody's on the same page moving forward.
Okay.
I don't wanna put anything out there and have people not in agreeance of what we're gonna do as a group moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, Mr. Patrick Henry, please.
Fire Department, month of July, in part, motor vehicle assist nine, vehicle fire one, grass brush fire five, seven false alarms, four electrical hazards, for a total of forty-three calls this month. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Uh, Ordinance Committee, Mr. Randy Carroll?
Okay, uh, Chief, I've talked to you a couple of times, you've asked me to hold off with passing the ordinance, and you can go over them again. Uh, I'm willing, whenever you're, I, we can't pass these, well, we can if, if there's twelve votes, but I'd rather have a public hearing, get the public's opinion about these.
I agree, it's, it's been, uh, tight the last couple of weeks, but, uh, next week.
Is that all, Randy? Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Housing Authority?
Okay, uh, we've had two meetings, which there's been no quorum, the three new people that were put on the commission, none of them showed up for both meetings. The residents of the Ortoli Center were very upset, because this is the only time they can get to ask questions and talk, because they usually have the meetings at the Ortoli Center, uh, July, August, September and October. And, or the, some of the residents were brought over by trans, by friends to the meeting, and there wasn't any meeting. And it was kind of disappointing, because the chairman, the people were upset, because the woman who's been working there for thirty years was laid off, and a woman was put in her place for six hours a week. Now, this woman did all kinds of things. She talked to the, the residents, she went to their apartment, she straightened out things for them. Um, and the chairman said that the reason, the people thought she was fired. And the chairman said that the reason she was laid off was because they ran out of grant money. My understanding was the grant goes until April, so I don't know how come they ran out of grant money. But it was very disappointing, it was very disappointing for the people, and of course, I left work early twice now to go to the meetings, because I do go, go to all those meetings. And I was disappointed, because we couldn't ask any questions, there was nobody there to discuss anything. So, I think it's very unfair to those people, and I do hope that the next month, that these people show up who were appointed by the mayor, who are supposed to be responsible, it's not a, a committee you go to just for fun, or you just go to visit. There are actual things going on in the town that need to be addressed, that the, the board needs to discuss, and I think the citizens of Ansonia should also know that it's not being done properly. So, if anybody wants to come to the meeting, it's next month, uh, the last Wednesday of the month, at the Ortoli Center of Runwood Lawn. It's very interesting, I go all the time, and I like talking to the tenants that are there and everything, and you do get an idea of what they like, and what they want, and what they're interested in. And, uh, Nikki did a great job with them, took them on trips and everything else, so I have no idea what's gonna happen now, or who's gonna do all the, the jobs that she did, but I was very sorry to see her go. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Carroll, please.
I'm very sorry, may I bring up two other things about the ordinance?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Rhonda gave me an ordinance that she would like passed, and also I, uh, oh, the mayor's not here. Um, I'll bring it up now, maybe you can relay it to him. I'm still waiting for Mike DeLassio, he wanted me to, uh, he wants an ordinance for the refrigeration, uh, air conditioning and things like that, to, uh, charge a fee, uh, and I haven't gotten it, and I'd like to save money for a secretary. Uh, I'd like to do them all at once, uh, instead of calling three different meetings, so if you ask Mike to please, uh, get that information for me, and I'll, I'll bring, bring it to the ordinance committee.
So that's not for tonight, that's obviously gonna be next month. Understood?
Well, whenever I have to meet with the mayor, I think the chief first.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any other committees I might have overlooked? Any other committees I might have overlooked? Hearing none? Um, municipal reports, uh, we have some, uh, Mr. McCarroll, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve our six call recommendations, as well as control approvals.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second on that, Mr. Joseph Yaman? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? These are all right here, I don't know if you have it or not. Okay. All right, that leaves the land use report?
Yes.
Mr. McCarroll, please.
I'd like to, uh, indicate that for the month of, uh, July 2017, total revenue was thirteen thousand four ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents.
Is there a second on that? By Mr. Castleitis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Mr. Castleitis, question? Oh, yes, Mr. Castleitis, uh, tax collector report and request for refunds, please.
In the amount of nine thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-two cents that sound to be correct.
Okay. Is there a second on that, by Mr., uh, Dr. Josh Stewart? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you all.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Charlie.
On the back of refund report here, we have a refund, reimbursement to Sanovia, Invest Creek Investment, twenty-three thousand, does that, do you have to do with the liens?
Well, we are lucky enough to have our tax collector here, Joanna, if you'd like to enlighten us, please.
Yeah, I don't find you what the, the condition. So, I ended up collecting for them, and they have, they were trying to get those in.
Okay, so that was handed in by the people, so that we have to pay them, that we have to give back to the, as well. Okay, I was just curious why it was so much money. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, actions and claims, appears there are none. And that brings us to communication number one. Uh, it's from Kevin Blake, Webster Hose, they have a gentleman that would like to be a fire police. I'll entertain a motion on, motion of, uh, communication number one, Mr. Joseph Janetti.
I make a motion to the chat first, communication number one, Blake.
Is there a second on that? Uh, Patrick Henry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Was there discussion, Joe?
No, I was just gonna have a second.
Oh, okay, all right, makes sense.
Just didn't see it.
I saw Pat first, sorry.
Okay, my hand was in the way.
Yes, ma'am. Um, okay, communication number two. Um, let's see, the, uh, Ansonia Board of Police Commissioners has a very detailed letter about the new police building on 65 Main Street. Chief Hale, would you like to opine about that, or?
Well, this was a discussion back in, uh, in the June, you know, June meeting, just some concerns that they wanted to pass along to the board, concerning their, the conversion of 65 to the, the police department, uh, they're obviously very, very much in favor of the project, but I think they just wanted their opinions heard, from the Board of Aldermen.
Um, I don't know if there's any action required this time, I guess, you know.
Can we discuss it at all?
No, no, please, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, I agree with, uh, Ms. Pitney, that we really shouldn't have the seniors and all the other ones in, in the parking in place, I think that's a great idea. And I do believe that the building next door, which is a historical building, would be a great place for the senior center, if they gutted it and left the building, historic building standing, because it is a beautiful building, if you really look at it. I'm sure it needs a lot of work inside, but I really think it would be great, we could put extra offices there, plus the seniors would have a place to go, which was their own's. And, um, I've been just looking at it, and I, like I say, I agree with Ann, that it's not the place for the seniors with the police department, and I think they probably feel that way, too.
Well, there's eighty-five thousand square feet in that building.
The one next door?
So, sixty-five Main Street.
I'm not talking about the police department, I'm talking about the building next door.
Together with the building next door, which has a, a significant amount of environmental issues, which would be quite costly.
Well, it's, it's quite costly to put the seniors anywhere, and I do agree, like I said with Ann, I, as a senior, would probably not wanna be in the same building with the police department, with all the activity that goes on there.
But that, that would be the same building.
But the next door building would be just, instead of tearing it down or destroying it.
That could be some, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Charlie Stowe, had your hand up, please.
Yeah, just a question to ask before this goes hurt to the next level. Um, if the seniors, um, 'cause I can kinda get the, the idea or message that they'd kinda like to have a place that they can get in when it's raining, or the, the, the parking lot's icy, or it's snowing, and the hot, is, are, is that gonna be able to be accommodated?
Well, I mean, obviously, the priority is the police department.
Absolutely, that comes first.
And, um, we're, we're, our arc, the police department, the architects that have been hired to do the needs assessment and feasibility study for the police department are, are working with our, in fact, they just met, are working with our architects, who are doing a needs assessment of the senior center.
So we're gonna have a recommendation?
Hopefully, very soon.
Oh, that's fine, that'd be great. Um, is that a good way, Chief, with, way that's spoken?
Yeah, they're, they're, uh, I know that they just had a recent, you know, conversation, so, I mean, there's still some work to do to figure all that out, but, again, the commission wanna make sure that you guys are aware of.
Yeah, I just, I, I was kinda looking at it as if it was somewhat cleared up, it'd be easier to put it down.
We also have to consider, um, you know, the cost, and, for our taxpayers, so we wanna do things in a cost-effective manner.
But you're, you're gonna have a survey, don't you?
Yes, required.
Let's see, yes. Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Patrick Henry?
Just to throw out my opinion, I think that the police will have one floor, we have another floor, that, there's a lot of space there, and we should use it, probably for the seniors amongst, other things. But I'm with you on the, uh, police commission, on the parking lot, I think that should just be for police vehicles. And if anyone from the police commission wants to come in and address the board, happy to have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Uh, Mr. DeLibro, you were next?
No, Pat's both on the line.
You're good? Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Randy Carroll?
Sheila, is there any way that Board of Aldermen can go through the, the building for the police department, so we can see what you're talking about all this time?
Sure, you mean, I mean, uh, some, some of the Aldermen have already been, been through, but, absolutely, we can arrange that.
Thank you. I'd like to go through it, I don't know what this looks like. Thank you.
Can I get a separate tour from Randy?
Just a second.
Communication number two hundred and five?
Uh, thank you, Mr. McCarroll, second by Mr. Castleitis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. McCarroll. Um, communication number three, um, this was what Mr. Marini was talking about, extending the deadline for application, city's early retirement offer, Mr. Marini already spoke about it, I'd entertain a motion at this time. Mr. McCarroll, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the retirement incentive.
Second by Mr. Dr. Josh Stewart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion, Joe?
Well, I don't really think we need, did we look at the amount of money that's being given out for the retirement? Eight thousand dollars as an incentive to retire, when they're already getting all the retirement benefits from it? Or six thousand dollars to retire? I would like to know personally where that money is being held, that's going out, or I don't even hear whether it's one or two or three people. I'm on Arms, and we've been asking for a raise from sixteen forty-three to eighteen dollars, and we're handing out eight thousand dollars just to leave. I don't quite get that. Sorry.
Uh, well, I would like to direct that to either Mr. Richie Bashir or Mr. John Marini that could explain the actuarials to us, and how the city will save money.
In short, there haven't been many takers at all, and the only takers so far have been positions that aren't being refilled, so right there, there's drastic savings. But essentially, just a long-term build-out could save us a lot of money.
I'm not talking about the, the retirement, I think that's great. But why should we be giving anybody, anybody retires from plan, I don't think they get six or eight thousand dollars just to retire. I don't know, I have all my own business, so I don't know what they do in, in unions and things like that. I have never heard of it, so I'm sorry. Like I said, I own my own business, I don't have the extensive knowledge of what goes on in the business, big business world.
It's an incentive plan, but Rich, you gotta find out where we draw the money from, if the offer stays.
It is a cost saving to the city.
Over time.
Right.
Isn't it? Over time, yeah, it's not a, not an immediate one.
Well, if we're saving money, why are we spending it giving incentives?
Well, that's how we're saving money, that's how we're saving.
Oh, that's how you save money, oh, excuse me.
Through attrition.
We save, uh.
Thank you.
Mr. DeLibro, please. Mr. DeLibro?
Just in light, uh, Alderman rating, major companies give what's called a severance benefit. Your service, you get, you get incentives to, to take.
Can I just explain to you, maybe major companies can afford it, Ansonia can't?
We can't afford not to do it, Charlie.
Okay. Hey, you're gonna do it anyway, so it really doesn't.
Okay, thank you, thank you all. Um, so, so we had a motion, a second, I don't think, know if I took the vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One, one opposed, Alderman rating? Thank you. Okay. Communication number four, um, uh, Mr. Joseph Yaman, please.
Uh, I believe this needs to get referred to planning and zoning, so I think a motion that we refer to PNC for consideration under 24 of the general statutes.
Uh, Mr. Martin Dempsey, is that a second, sir? Okay. Any discussion? Anybody? Mr. Randy Carroll?
This property, I went there, we, last night, but it also was brought up to inland wetlands, when I was on with the wetlands, and there, I cannot see any reason why the city would wanna accept it. It has, uh, inland wetlands problems on the property, the back of the slope is like that, and it's, it's, it would be a liability for the city to take it.
In what way, Randy?
Well, the plot is very narrow.
Right.
To the street.
Yeah.
And then the back goes down.
Right.
You can't build on it.
Okay.
So if it's a park or anything like that, you're gonna have liability if somebody goes down that. It's, it's a sheer drop.
Okay.
And at the bottom of it are wetlands that there are problems with.
What's somebody doing back there anyways?
She wants to give the property to the city.
Okay.
And I'm voicing the problems with that property.
You know, I'm just an advocate of open space, and I'm, what I'm, the angle I'm coming from is, is, is housing density. And, City of Ansonia has nineteen thousand people in six point something square miles, which makes our housing density pretty dense, at least in my world. So anytime you get some chance for open space, to, you know, so people can breathe a little bit, that's, you know, that's a benefit to society.
Well, as the chairman of the land sales committee, which also accepts property, uh, I'm against it.
Okay, so noted. Anybody else with an opinion?
Is the land buildable?
No.
Yaman?
Regardless of the opinion, the statutes say we have to have PNC.
No, no, I, I'm not arguing with that, I'm just, you know.
It's just a discussion.
Just discussion, that's all.
So we can wait to make a decision after?
Yeah, it's after PNC, so this is.
Must we beat on this dead horse?
Okay, uh, Mr. Patrick Henry?
My time is short, I have to beat on everything. So, you could keep it open space, it's open space now, practically speaking, you can't build on it, except we're collecting taxes on it when somebody owns it. So that's something else. So if we don't accept it, like you don't want to, we keep collecting taxes, if they're paying taxes.
Okay. Mr. Blackwell, had your hand up?
I just wanted to know if the land was buildable, that's all.
Okay.
If it's not buildable, it stays open space, we collect taxes, and no liability. I don't see the need to take it out, but.
Plus, she's not giving the two-family house that is right next door to the city. She's keeping what she's making money off of, but the property that can't do anything with, she wants to give to the city.
No. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Yaman has a motion to refer to planning and zoning. Do I need a second? Mr. Carroll?
I'm done.
Oh, okay, Martin Dempsey already did, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you all. Okay. Which brings us to resolution number one. Would you like to just give us a quick overview of that, Mr. Yaman?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to say thank you, Dr. Malone and Mr. Tripp, for your comments. I do appreciate them. I guess one of the things that struck me about this statute in particular is the fact that it is so open. It's, it's clear what the procedure is, and that's that. I, I think that is what is needed to study something like this. I guess the, I, anyway, I'm, well, I'm the newest member of the board, I think, so I'm, I'm not as familiar with the intimate details of some of the, some of the issues and fighting that has gone on in the past, but I do know that, well, all you have to do is look to Hartford to see sort of the perpetual financial crisis that this state is in, and it trickles down, and we have it here. So one of the things that I, this sort of statute and process does is it allows us to study something. And I think in, when you're in a financial climate that we're in, I don't think we should be leaving stones unturned. Now, I, I do understand and appreciate the concerns from, you know, the Board of Education, but the statute, and I, you know, I have the, I have an email written from presumably one of the attorneys for the Board of Education indicating that pretty much the process that I was gonna explain here tonight. Mr. Tripp, you did a great job of kind of summarizing it as well, but it, it's essentially to have this legislative body approve, approve this study, and that's exactly what it is. It's not, it's not to approve regionalization. That's not what this is at all. What this is, is to study regionalization, do it comprehensively and thoroughly. And there's an example that I, you know, that was handed out to many of the members of the Board of Aldermen, and I can make it available to other people as well, but it's, it talks about between Norfolk and Colberg Public Schools back in about 2015. They produce a thorough and comprehensive report. And it's over thirty pages long, and it goes through everything, including a five-year budget plan. It goes through a capital plan. It goes through an education plan for each grade level, and it gets very specific. So I, I, one of the, again, one of the things that struck me about this process is by agreeing to study it, we can seek those partners. I don't think you can go to a partner and say, hey, let's have more conversation. I think it's time at this point, as we stare down, you know, as, as we look to Hartford and we see a budget problem there, and they haven't even settled a budget, and we're trying to make sure that our budget stays in line, and we have Mr. Stowe on top of that, but we have to conduct this kind of study to make sure that we're looking at everything. And, you know, just to go through the process briefly, and I, and I won't be too long, but if we agreed to conduct such a study, and that's what it is, it's a temporary, temporary regional school study commission. Five members are appointed, and as you pointed out, there's five people from Ansonia and five people from, let's say, a partner, who whatever that city or municipality may be. At least two members have to be from the Board of Education. So it's not like the Board of Education wouldn't be very, very well represented, and there could be more than two members. You know, they go through that process, and my understanding is they break into many subcommittees to explore the various different things with their various different specialties. Now, there's the cause for concern, and Dr. Malone, you brought that up. It's my understanding, and I, and I recognize that, and it's the first thing that Mr. Stowe asked me when I brought it up to him, but there's a lot of money out there for regionalization grants. That is the trend in this state.
But did you realize the last time something really appealed regionally and was successful was in the nineteen eighties?
I understand that.
That was the last one. I don't know what, I had a tech.
There was an attempt, and this was, this actually was.
Salem as well, and they had big, near services, shared services.
But that's, but see, that's the, that's the great part about this, is it sort of takes the politics out of it. And that's, that, that's, that's the beauty of this statutory process, is that it's not the Board of Education, and it's not the Board of Aldermen.
We have a conversation with you. In bringing two unions together, you, you're, that's never gonna happen to Derby and Ansonia.
But that's.
And I'll be a resident here all my life, and I was a resident all my life. Derby and Ansonia will never come together regionally. They will share services.
Okay.
You think they will, Mr. Marini?
It never hurts to stop trying, if it's for the.
I'm not saying stop trying, but I'm saying they will never. Just this year, I did two attempts here. I, I flogged it over because we wanted to work on scheduling, so that some of our, we would take some of their kids for certain courses, and we would bring some of our kids over there.
And I appreciate that.
I invited them in. I wanted them when.
But Dr. Malone?
I wanted to let you know, when we lost our, well, Sheila, for the prepaid readiness program, we had a grant, and it was fifty thousand dollars. That's what the woman was paid. I wanted to bring, give it to Derby and bring them in and have their person cover both. That was, their word, it's, well, their word generally didn't even bring it.
I, I assume you're talking about the Board of Education in Derby?
I want, I want to see, and, and from what I understand, this is to add all the areas in the state of this.
Be that as it may, I mean, I, I don't know.
I guess you're waiting to see after election time.
No, we're waiting to see whether or not this board wants to take that step. And that's, that, that's sort of why this resolution.
Part of the process is you need somebody to work with.
Well, you need to want to do it first.
Yeah, sure.
So you gotta have the conversation.
We did it twice. I'm just, I'm just reading right.
Mr. President?
But this, what ended up.
Sir?
I'd like you to come over and I'll show you now. I have, I have a folder right here.
And I'd be happy to, and I'd be happy to look at it. My point.
Dr. Malone, Mr. Yaman?
I'm not against it.
I've got some Aldermen, Mr. Blackwell, you had your hand up first.
I just wanna make it clear, at least away, I understand this is that. It's not up to the mayor of Derby, it's not up to the mayor of Ansonia, it's not up to this board or the Board of Education board. If this study comes to fruition, and everybody does their due diligence, it'll be up to the voters.
It's up to the state.
It's up to, actually, it goes to referendum and the people vote.
Yeah, and then the people vote.
And the people vote on it, right? So it's not up to a select.
But before that, the state of Connecticut gets involved.
The state of Connecticut says yea or nay to the study itself.
Right.
But before you get to that point, the two Board of Aldermen from whatever municipality or Board of Selectmen, whoever it may be, have to agree to actually conduct the study.
Correct.
And if you're gonna conduct the study, that triggers the statutory process, which is the whole, whole idea.
The whole process here is communicating. I think you missed the whole point. You didn't communicate, you didn't even know where we are in the process, and no one communicated it to the, to education. Shouldn't we know about this?
Well, I, I guess.
Doesn't happen to us. It happens all together. We make it happen together.
So.
This is not for someone.
I'd like to be making adjustments.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Malone. Mr. Patrick Henry, please.
Yeah, so about five days ago, some of the Board of Aldermen got together. This, this resolution didn't generate from the mayor's office.
Did you have form when you did that?
I, I don't.
Did you check?
I didn't check.
No form.
No form. No form. The point is, this board hasn't looked at this as a board until now, which seems to me the logical step. First, this board has to agree to pursue it. Otherwise, why spin your wheels and waste your time going to Derby, going to Seymour, going to Shelton, go to the Board of Ed if this board doesn't want to pursue it? So I, it's perfectly fine that it generated from Alderman Yaman, now he's brought it to the board, and if we pass it, and then we go to the Board of Ed, and then we can go to another town or towns. Thank you.
Mr. Henry, Mr. Marini, Sheila, and the mayor were involved before Mr. Yaman.
Then we can have all these meetings, Mr. President. We can.
If I can recognize Alderman Joan Raiden, please.
Can we table this at this time, please?
Is that a motion?
Can we table this at this time, please? Because we're not gonna have a.
Is that a second, Mr. Stowe?
Yeah. 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 We can talk a little bit.
All right, well, I, I've got a motion on the table. I'm just wondering if there's a second. There's no second. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Stowe?
I'll second it.
Is there a second? And what's the pleasure on how the?
Con Sounders discussion.
Discussion, yes.
Is that a second? I'll go with discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Stowe.
I made a realistic decision when we were talking about committees here.
Uh huh.
Personally, Patrick Henry.
This is discussion to.
Patrick Henry.
To table the motion.
I'm talking.
This is discussion to table the motion. You gonna talk about tabling the motion?
This is discussion for tabling the motion. Otherwise, we vote.
Actually, technically, there is no discussion on the table. You can vote, though. How do you want to vote?
Voice, roll call vote.
Roll call vote is called for.
I forgot about the rating.
I'll.
Carol?
Yes.
No?
No.
Pacaro?
No.
Genetti?
Can you read that motion again?
It's just a motion on the table, resolution one.
So we stop talking about it.
What do you, what ends up happening then, Joey? You just dead-end it? Go ahead.
Do nothing? No.
Consilitis. Yaman?
No.
Raiden?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Schur?
No.
Blackwell?
No.
Dobiebro?
No.
So.
Consensus, no.
So that means we still have a discussion.
Yes, we're still having a discussion. Mr. Charlie Stowe, please proceed.
Okay, now I'm gonna look back at you where I was, Mr. Henry, with all respects. You know, I go to Board of Ed meetings all the time. You can ask professor, I, I, I mean, when we did the strategic, I, I was one of the only two, I think there was two or three Aldermen that made it almost through that whole process. Out of respect, I try to go to the meetings. Otherwise, I feel like I don't have a right to talk about it. However many of you guys, with me being the subcommittee chairman, knowing all the time I spent working on this, and I mean, I'm not always Mrs. Malone's favorite Alderman, I know, there's a lot of times I am not. I am not. But to do what you did and not even ask me anything about it, and, and then sit here as smug as, as could be, I mean, I'm offended. You don't have to care about it, but I'm offended.
You were invited, Joe.
Mister, yesterday.
No, you were, you were invited to, you were invited to last week.
I didn't, maybe there was something wrong with my phone.
The resolution was specifically drafted for that purpose.
Maybe there was something wrong with my phone, I don't know, I didn't pick it up. Maybe it's somewhat my responsibility. However, I'd like to go back to where we were talking about. Mr. Yaman has a suggestion that could possibly save the city some money. I, and maybe it'll have a good effect for the Board of Ed, possibly too. And I think most, all of us here are all for that. And the only way that this is gonna start is with dialogue, not having a vote to close discussion, but to have a dialogue. I, you can't have it here and now. We don't have enough time to, to, to really, we need to start the process, we need to meet with the Board of Education, we need to go over the points that Mr. Yaman's trying to make, and then when he comes back next month to the Alderman meeting, he will have more information and have had some cooperation and be able to feel out where he wants to go with this.
While I, while I don't disagree with the sentiment, this is the point, is that the conversation occurred for the purposes of saying, do we want to do this as a board? Is this something we want to look at? Because ultimately, it's the Board of Aldermen that votes for this. If we do in fact want to do that, okay, the conversation can then turn to, with the Board of Education to determine, who would you like to partner with? And that was sort of the design in the resolution itself. That's why there is not a town listed there. So when I, you know, I got, was handed an email from council by Alderman Tripp indicating, you know, that there's no name. And that's true. There's no other town name. Why? Because we haven't had that conversation with you yet, but it's still bringing up the.
But if you would know who you want to partner with.
Bringing up the process and talking about whether or not we can save.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Malone, thank you. Charlie, thank you.
Can I finish?
I, I, I have to break this up and interject. Mr. Yaman, all due respect, I think what Mr. Stowe is saying to you is he is requesting that you confer with the Board of Education and come back to us next month. Okay? Is that a motion, Mr. Stowe?
I, I defer to Mr. Yaman. Is that, if we do something like that, is that okay with you? You started this.
I have no problem with talking with anybody.
And see where, how far they've got along with what they were trying to do. See where it intersects with what you're trying to do with the Aldermen and go to the next.
I got, I got two issues.
No, the answer would be no.
I'll just state them. I don't have a problem having the conversation. I don't have a problem having the conversation with anybody about conducting a study and getting more information before we make a decision. But what I can say is this, is that if there was a study, okay, or some sort of thing that triggered this statutory process, we would know about it. So there wasn't, okay? What I heard was a poll, okay, was taken to determine whether or not the residents of Derby wanted to do that. Okay? So here.
You're lying to you or not?
I don't, I didn't say you were lying here. All it is is to authorize a study.
I mean.
Alderman Raiden, while we're waiting.
Okay.
Why can't we have the study?
All right, Doctor, just leave it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Doctor.
I happen to have the paper that Dr. Malone's talking about. This was all processed in, in, August seventeen, two thousand and sixteen, a year ago. I spoke to Dr. Malone, I read through what she did, they tried to have meetings, nobody would agree, there was people didn't show up.
Right.
The mayor was here, and then the mayor wasn't there, and then the other mayor was there, wasn't there. She made arrangements to go up to visit a town, I don't remember the name of the town, where it was going on, and nobody went with her, she went by herself from Ansonia. So you're having this, you're talking about the same thing without starting with some kind of a basis, and you have to have a basis to talk to the education as well as the Aldermen. There has to be. You just.
All right, Doctor, just, uh, let it be.
What is going on here? Point of order, come on. Mr. President, please.
Yeah, I got it. Point of order. Doctor, thank you.
Nothing directed.
All right, we got, Joan, you done?
I'm finished.
Mr. Randy Carroll, please.
Okay. I was at that meeting that Joe's talking about, and it was August fifteenth.
I have August seventeenth on here.
I have a minute from the meeting.
I don't know, maybe it was two meetings, 'cause this is August seventeenth.
And that meeting was between Derby and Ansonia.
That's what's.
And I'll make copies for everybody. Derby had no intention of regionalizing.
Derby Board of Education and Derby Aldermen?
Can I finish, please?
Sure.
I think it's a great idea.
The mayor doesn't make that call.
Can I finish, please? But I think that until Derby is willing to sit down with our Board of Education to discuss that, we're putting the cart before the horse.
Thank you. Guys are misunderstanding the process.
No. Joe, you said you were... I'm sorry to interrupt like that. You said you were willing to make a motion. If you make that motion, I'll second it.
I make the motion.
We have a motion. Motion to request Mr. Yaman to meet with the Board of Education and then come back...
And I think Charlie Stowe should be here, too, because the chairman of the Education.
Right, Education. That's actually Mr. Charlie Stowe, Mr. Randy Carroll, Mr. Joseph Genetti, and I'll put Mr. Joseph Yaman on the Education Committee. So I got a motion, a second. Discussion, Mr. Pat Henry?
Discussion. So, you know, voting to let the Boards of Ed, that's ridiculous. This is coming from the Aldermen. It's a resolution from the Aldermen. If this board is going to down the road, vote this thing down, why should the Boards of Eds waste their time on it? We should decide now if we just want to talk about it. We're just talking about talking about it. What is the harm?
We just want more information, Patrick. Half this one...
More information after we get the resolution that says, "Yeah, we want more information."
I don't understand where one month is going to make a difference. I don't understand. You've got a lifetime of education ahead of us. One month is going to make a difference? Does it...
Let's say... You have to say yes or no. Let's say yes.
I don't think it does. I think we should try every avenue we have here. And why are we rushing this? I don't understand.
All right.
The fastest resolution tonight.
All right, I'm going to go. Thank you, Joe. I'm going to go. Mr. Yaman, quick, and then Mr. Henry, and then we're going to vote.
I just want to say this. Again, I don't have any issue with having a conversation with anybody about the idea of studying this. What I'm concerned about is that we are bypassing what the procedure is that is set forth. The Aldermen determine whether or not you want to trigger this. That's it. That's what the statute says. I can read it for everybody. It's section 10-39, section B, okay? "Two or more local regional school districts may by vote of their legislative bodies join in the establishment of a temporary regional school study committee." Okay? There's additional language in there. Feel free to read it yourself. That's it.
Joe.
That's all we're talking about here, Joe. And I don't mind having the conversation. Again, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but when we're talking about the Board of Education in Ansonia, meeting with the Board of Education in Derby, and they decided that the Board of Educations don't want to merge, that's a completely different question than whether or not the Aldermen in Ansonia want to work with the Aldermen in Derby or the Selectmen in Seymour, whoever it is that we decide to partner with to study this if we do. That's a different and completely different process.
All right.
Joe, did you say two or more?
Yes.
We don't have two. We only have us. We don't have another town.
Correct. Because we need to know whether or not...
Before we pass this, though, that's my only concern.
All right, Josh, real quick.
I suppose we could. I went out of the different way, Joe. I went around in the inverse, saying, "Do we want to do this before we have somebody?"
Go ahead, Josh.
Is it like step 0.5, not really stating step one, because we don't have a partner on the up yet? So that first line, you just kind of validated your...
I didn't think about it that way. I thought about it as, "Let's have a discussion and see if we want to do it. And if we do, then we can worry about finding a partner."
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call for a vote. We already have a motion. We already have a second. Somebody call for a roll call vote?
Somebody repeat the motion before we vote. Can somebody please repeat what the motion was so everyone knows what they voted?
Joe?
Your motion was to request that our Education Committee meet with the Board of Education
and get back to us next month. Was that your motion, sir?
And then see... I'll contacting another town to see if anyone else is interested in doing it.
All right.
Well, I'm adding to it.
He's adding to it. So, Mr. Joe Genetti made the motion, seconded by Mr. Charlie Stowe. Roll call vote called for Joe by Joan Raiden.
I need a clarification, ma'am.
Sir?
I need a clarification on that.
What would you like to know, sir?
If you're sounding like you said...
I think we should get our committee with Education and see if we can get another town to go in with us.
So we're going to get your other town on board before we vote for it? Thank you.
It's crazy.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have somebody to call for roll call vote. Please read the roll call vote.
Piel?
Can I ask a question? If you vote yes, are you for his motion or...
Yes. Yes is for what?
Thank you. Yes.
This is for doing nothing.
Stowe?
Yes.
Pacaro?
No.
Genetti?
Yes.
Dempsey?
No.
Consilis?
Yes.
Yaman?
No.
Consilis and yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Raven?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Short?
Yes.
Blackwell?
No.
Deliva?
No.
Tripp?
Yes. Motion carries seven to six.
Can I ask a question before we...
Go ahead, Mr. Stowe.
I don't... I just want to put this out on the record. I do not understand for the life of me what talking to or not talking to the Board of Education has anything to do with us voting for an Alderman consulting this Board of Education. What would you call it? Regionalization or cost sharing? What on earth does talking to them to find out where they've gone with this, how does that affect us coming here next month and voting with the Board? It doesn't. So, but you voted against meeting with them.
No, I voted against for a discussion on this town.
Same thing.
That's the process.
Okay. I don't...
I have a problem when we can't talk about things.
So now that it's been passed, so now that it's been passed, seven to six, are you going to go to the Board of Ed?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'll wait for your call. Let me know when the meeting is. I'll be there.
Mr. Genetti, please.
Mr. Tripp, I just want everyone to know that I'm not against regionalizing with any other town. I just want to make sure we do it the right way.
Thank you.
I don't think a month is going to make a difference, okay? Let's see if we can get another town on board with us and see where it goes from there. And it might be a good thing. And if it does...
Mr. Dempsey had his hand up, Joe. Mr. Dempsey, please.
I'd just like to say, I think the problem with the motion was the amendment, was the addition to seeking out another municipality first before that discussion is even had. I agree that the discussion should start with this board and our Board of Ed before we start reaching out to others.
Exactly. Next one.
But I voted no because of that stipulation.
Well, I mean, do we... If we take that out, would we have a unanimous vote? Yes? You're right, boy. Just I just agree.
Now, we already have a direction. We have a plan. We'll move forward with that. And then it'll all be revisited.
One comment, and then I'm done, Mr. President, is that I just wanted to... Joe, I'm with you. I don't... The only thing I'll say different from what you said is this, is that I'm not sure I'm for regionalization, which is why I want to have a study done.
I agree with you.
And that's really my entire point about this resolution, was for purposes of looking into that. And whether or not it's tonight, which it's not going to be, or next month, more information is good, and I'm all for it, okay? But what I don't want to see is that this thing fall by the wayside because people don't want to have the conversation.
Hang on, Carol. Hang on.
That's fine. I'm with you.
Dr. Josh Short, please.
Is it possible for me to volunteer for that committee as well?
You can go along.
As a glutton? I'd be great.
I can do that, Joe. So I'm adding Mr. Joseph Yaman and Mr. Josh Short. Would anybody else like to be part of it? Mr. Martin Dempsey, okay? Nice to have our educators there.
The meeting is not...
All right, wait. I've been too loose with this meeting, folks. I totally get it. So, you know, let us just work through it.
The dialogue between the two would be a great starting point. Do you think that's the best way to start it? For the formalization of the whole committee, because I believe that may have to be reported the same as tonight. So we do the discussions first.
Agreed, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Martin Dempsey.
You can't always get what you want. That's Trump's favorite. That's his favorite.
Okay, if I can move this meeting along, please. Ordinances, Mr. Randy Carroll, do you want to talk about the ordinances, please?
Yes, I brought it up before, but as Chairman of the Ordinance Committee, we have not had a public hearing. The chief has asked me months ago to go over it again with him, the ordinances. I would like to go over to the... with the chief, have a public hearing, and then pass all the ordinances.
So you, as ordinance committee chair, are going to table these for next month? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Do you need to have a public hearing?
Well, Corporation Council, what's going on with public hearings?
We don't need a public hearing if we have a vote of 12. Unless...
Mr. Carroll, what... So, you need to speak to Chief Hale as well, right?
Yes.
So there needs to be more work done on the ordinances.
If we're passing ordinances, I think as Chairman of the Ordinance Committee, that the public should have a right to voice their opinions on them.
That's your prerogative.
Well, you can schedule a hearing before the...
Yeah.
Well, I have to meet with the chief to go over these first.
Hopefully expeditiously.
So we're going to make a motion to postpone these ordinances?
Postpone or table, Corporation Council?
Table.
Table. Motion to table. Randy?
Motion to table.
Motion to table to move it to next month, so...
I'll second it.
By Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Stowe. Discussion. I don't hear any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Oppo... No, I oppose. One opposed, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed by one? Thank you. Okay, so that's our ordinances. New business. I don't hear any. Old business, there was something...
A potential proposal?
Oh, yes, yes. New business. Who's that? Mr. Stowe?
Who's that?
The insurances.
The insurances? I'm lost here. What were you...
Ma'am, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's been a busy night.
I thought when we closed that, that we were going to wait on that. But that's fine.
You want to bring that up, or...
We can bring it up at a finance committee meeting.
That's what I wa... And the Corporation Council said we didn't need one yet. So that's why I was kind of like, "What?"
All right, so...
I didn't know we were...
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know either. The President kind of... With all respect, so...
Because this has nothing to do with the early retirement offer. This is something different.
And you've...
So we're talking about the insurances, the retirement insurance. No?
Insurance, it's a retirement plan.
Right, retirement plans. We're talking about the retirement plans, which falls under the Finance Committee. So do we discuss that now under new business, or does it go before the Finance Committee?
How do we... We didn't have it on our...
Agenda.
We didn't have it on our agenda. And then we're putting somebody from the public in new business. I mean, is that... You can do that?
No, I can do it. As an Alderman, any Alderman.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Carroll.
I make a motion to direct this to the Finance Committee and invite this... Could I have your name, please? Jerry Swiker to that Finance Committee meeting.
Okay. Motion... You're making the motion. Is there a second on that, please? By Mr. Castellitis? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So Charlie, you've got that.
I don't... I mean, is... You're asking, going to ask for a date? Can we do August 21st at 7:00 after the...
We have the salaries committee.
Right. And hopefully in an hour... And we'll give an hour to that, and at 7:00 we'll do the retirement.
On the 21st, correct?
Yeah, 21st, 7:00 PM.
All right. Ordinances at what time?
I know.
Salaries. Salaries at what time, Martin?
At 6:00.
Salary at 6:00, and then this will be at 7:00?
7-ish.
Retirement's... Retirement's...
No, I will have one after the other. That's all. No worries.
I'm going to vote.
Okay.
6:00 PM salary. Do we have enough time on this hour? Is an hour enough to cover?
That's what I said.
All right, well, there's a sidebar. Ma'am, can we just have your last name and spelling, please, for the public record?
The salaries committee have an hour. Is that enough for us?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're looking at the 9th of 21st. Is that correct?
21st, 7... August 21st, 7:00 PM.
Right. Oh, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So that's new business. I guess we're going to do that on the 21st, the 9th of 21st. Any old business? Dr. Shaw Short?
The previously... The other one that was labeled Resolution 1 that we kicked back last one?
Yeah, it's on page 13 of the minutes, if people want to refer to that. Fire Marshal has been very patient with us. Thank you for your patience, sir. Could you just give us a quick overview of this and why you recommend it?
The fire system's been around for about seven years. Basically, what it is, more or less a clearinghouse. There are central points where all the contractors who service all the fire department systems send reports, then get sent directly to me. Right now, when we current fire codes, the vendors are not allowed to report to me when there's a problem with the system. Fire alarm would be down at a building, I don't get notified unless I have to do their inspection or somebody calls and help. I found four in the past three weeks where the systems have been down. One in Anthony House Building. There was ground fault and there was a problem with the system. The reason I found that was I wanted to reset a fire alarm and it was showing trouble. They go, "Oh, yeah, it's a bad workstation." That's something we should have known about in the beginning. When the vendors go and do their annual testings, we get the reports and we'll know about it. It's free to the city. The contractors pay a small fee, they upload the reports, and they come directly to me. I can't chase around looking at 100, 200 systems in the city. That'd be my entire year. We get a commission to go in. Now we have vendors in there checking sprinklers, checking firearms. We're going to get the reports. We'll be on top of stuff.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
I'm involved with the Ansonia Housing, and I know you get a lot of calls, Fire Department. It's a lot of calls over there. I think there might be a problem with where their alarm systems are put or something. Can they investigate, look into... Will they give that information off?
Seven wood long. The problem is cooking.
Right.
If the detectors aren't where they're supposed to be, based on the layout of the apartment, they don't turn on the fans. And of course, the fans don't be outside. So if they don't turn them on, they burn the woods, it's going to trip the detector. Nothing we can do about that. It's a code installation.
Okay, so it's not actually the... It's actually the tenants that are there that are having problems?
The best thing that can be done is the woods be vented to the exterior of those. And that will just don't smoke right outside.
Maybe we can talk to Ansonia Housing to do that?
We've discussed it. There's a possibility.
Well, we have to work on it. Maybe a grant.
Isn't there alarms that are put in kitchens that are heat sensitive nowadays that are smoke sensitive?
There are the detectors. However, the apartments that are the issues, they're more a studio.
So it's open space?
So it's open floor plan. You need a smoke protection because of the sleeping area. Here has been a rotten arborist.
Mr. Carroll, please.
I also attend the house of authority meetings. And this problem also, if they're boiling water for coffee or tea, it goes on.
That's why I was wanting to go with it. With it heat sensitive.
Yeah, I got that.
In order for them to boil water, it's set at 8:00. It's been boiling for quite a while because they've got to produce quite a good steam to get into the smoke engine, which is not working to generate. They are... So there's something on there. They just boil the water.